For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time I take a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam President, I can make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the following amendments. Additional certified classified personal actions for consideration on E dash three.
Motion to approve the agenda of an amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Janine. Any discussion? Um, since we're all here, do you want to just do show of hands? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, we do have one public comment, so John Weese, if you'd like to come to the podium and give your heavier five minutes.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to have a little conversation about masks. In November, or actually in the beginning of the school, we started with masks and masks did not prevent us from going to level six. And masks are not the reason that we're down to where we're at today. Um, I reviewed the gating criteria. I've looked at Finner County and I apologize for not being here sooner. I had some prior commitments, but through the whole month of February and even currently, based on the numbers set forth by the district and what I'm reading and what I'm seeing is we should be at a minimum of level two, possibly level one. And we shouldn't be requiring masks in school. So just wanted to have a little conversation about that. Um, currently today, I just checked before we came, we have zero in the hospital, twelve percent positivity rate and fifty-one active cases in the county. So I'd just like to have some discussion as to why we're still at three and a half, why we're still requiring masks. We do still have an online option for any parent that isn't comfortable sending their students to school. If masks get removed, um, just don't understand why we're still requiring our students to wear a mask based on the criteria set forth by you all. Thank you.
Um, Dr. Carling, can you follow up with Mr. Weese at a later time in regards to his questions maybe? Thank you. Um, just to kind of explain during public comments, we don't really engage in a discussion, but Dr. Carling can follow up. At this time, um, we have a building presentation from Altara.
Hi, this is Janine. When, uh, for our presentations are offered them, um, we decided because of the possibility of going to them, that we were going to do a video. So we have interviewed some students and a couple of teachers and took together a video to showcase our school. So I will share my screen here. Hopefully the sound is loud enough. Alright, can y'all see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Alright, here we go. Enjoy. Hi, I'm Selena Cooper, it's Principal of Altara Elementary. Tonight's course of education meeting, we will be producing a video where we interview some staff and students to tell you about all the wonderful things going on in our school. So we hope you enjoy.
Hi, my name is Amy. My name is Sophie. My voice is bad, too. This is Amy. I'm an adult now. My name is Amanda. My favorite part of school is my age. Hi, my name is Allo. My favorite part of school is my age.
Hi, my name is Lily Grace. My favorite part of school is my face. My mom loves me because of my hair. Hello, my name is Amy. My favorite part of school is our team. We're all awesome. And they call my daughter and my girlfriend, Emily. They always tell my dad I'm beautiful.
Hi, I'm Anita. Um, I am a student here at Altara Elementary. Well, here, um, is where we do the base every Tuesday. And what we do is take students to college. So like, so we do is we exchange them money for, um, making it like a prize or something. And here, um, every time a student, they put this public, we put their name here in the draw. And like at the end of the year, we will draw out the names and you like, um, so they can like win a prize. The greatest prize that you guys still get when they earn enough money. Okay. So I've been part of our student council here in our school for two years now. And one of the, one of the things we do, um, is let's say for me. And what we do is we have to work, what we have in, in these, okay, these activities are for each classroom. And we have to pick the stuff that we have inside and play with to help to go, like the white people that we have. We would also be doing other stuff, like year round, maybe like doing some activities for the school or setting up something.
Who's your teacher? What grade are you in? And what school do you go to? What is your favorite thing to do at school? What do you love about Epic? What is your second favorite thing to do at school? What kind of work do you like to do? What's your favorite subject? Math. Thank you, Deidre, for your time.
My name is Erin. I've been here in this school for two years. My favorite subject is math. And I think the school has changed a lot since COVID-19. Because everyone has to wear a mask and I write that everyone has an iPad so they can do this and work on it.
My name is Amy. And one of the things that I like about the school is, uh, we have a special event. And usually when I'm present, it's just a few bottles going around and it's a champion and I might go. So when you think, and if you wear the trophy and hold the trophy, um, I always want mountains because maybe helps us along the way.
I, uh, I love everything about P.E.
Hi, I'm Mr. Larry, a D.D. teacher here at Altara. This year, due to the COVID restrictions, we are currently doing, uh, units every two weeks. Uh, we add on shared equipment between classes and at the end of two weeks, I then hide it and I can switch over to another class after the weekend.
And what's behind you, Tiara? Do you ever get to play on the hot floor? Okay. Very good.
Hello, I'm Rita. Come out and take a look. I'll just go out and do my whole of day. Wow, I just turned on a whole page on, well, this is number one. Yeah, I think they're gonna do. I leveled up the office and the size back is me being mighty. And it's your thing to level up, uh, like me in the whole of day.
Hello, my name is Ellen Morris. And I got an Altara Elementary school and I'm going to make a little song, my favorite song. Oh my God, oh my God, it's all you do. Look out, I'm getting tired of you. It's all you love. It's worth to get ready, see your voice made. Wake up and dream, make it true. Look out, I'm getting tired of you. It's all you love. It's like that far too long, round and dark, wake up. Something about, um, Altara Elementary School, something we've got a big talent, we need a teacher who can do her own, which are off the top. And, um, we have a website that we do, it's called neighbormeetings.com. And there are different, you need to go to the door there.
My name is Eli. And first, there are the founding friends, Alex, and here's my book.
And we too have made some changes in the library this year because of COVID. Earlier this year, we did a lot of electronic lesson plans, new boom cards, which were kind of like lessons that we just could get into more. We also have had, have had our books quarantined for seventy-two hours, that means lots of our books are off the shelves until later in the week. Had lots of hand sanitizer that found in the school library.
Hi, I am Natalie. I live in Altara. I have been here since kindergarten and I am now in third grade. My favorite part of Altara is that how nice the teachers and students are and it makes me feel happy, so I mean nice to them. One of the projects I did in here was a timeline of how I was from when I was a baby and what I am right now. And it was a lot of fun making it and I also did it with technology throughout the year.
Kind of what? What school do you go to, Kenneth? Who's your teacher? Very nice. What's your favorite thing to do at school? What else do you love to do at Altara? Thank you for sharing, Kenneth. Have a great day.
Hi, I'm Selena Tina and I go to school at Altara. I'm in first grade. My favorite subject is reading and not saying a stupid word about it. There's a young student and we got it. I'm making a movie. I'm making a movie on Altara. I think the subjects are, I don't know, I don't know.
Hi, this is Russo.
I'm Olivia.
I'm Eli.
And we go to Altara. We love Altara because
I love Altara because I love the work. I guess, I like, I like Altara because I love my kids.
We love Altara because everyone works together as a team.
My name is Mary. I am a senior in the dock in the middle of the class. I like to read in the class. If you learn that name, and for help, I have to remember to add E.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nissa. And this is my daughter. What's your name?
Emily.
Emily, good job. So for most families this year, obviously with COVID and everything, it has been very difficult to try to be involved and be an attendance at school. But luckily, since I teach here and Julie attends school here, and the school we attend is Altara. Brown. Yes, Altara. Bye. Good. Your name is Julie. Altara Elementary School. I teach, uh, at Altara. That's your teacher, but what's your name? It's like Altara. Very good. Ready, go.
Today, this is my favorite part of Altara.
Thank you, Deidre, for your time today.
Alright, so back to Altara for the twenty twenty-one school year. And at this time, if you have any questions for me, I would be happy to answer them.
That was a great video. Thank you for sharing. Any questions? I know I'm going to feel dumb when I ask, but can you remind me what Epic is? One of the students said his favorite thing was Epic.
So Epic is a, it's a, it's an activity that has a lot of different courses and books to thank you for.
I knew I'd heard it, but I couldn't remember what it was. Okay, well, maybe, right, it's the books, because when we were talking about the library. Thank you. And thank you for having recycling at your school. Mark, do you have a question?
Um, yeah, who is your partner on the credit union again?
So we work through Golden Flame Credit Union and then the name of our, uh, branch is Golden Dragon Credit Union.
Very good. Thank you.
And our four graders are the ones that they go through these, um, application processes at the beginning of the year. They come out with an application and then, um, we choose our workers from there, so.
Well, I have to admit, I missed having your, um, class at the courthouse this year. That was fun last year. Um, getting to have the, um, trial of the century. We had, um, the big bad wolf, or yeah, the big bad wolf, sweet curly the pig, um, for, um, searing his fur. So fortunately, um, the defense attorneys for Curly the Pig were very successful in defending Curly the Pig. And the jury found in favor, all three juries found in favor of Curly the Pig. So, um, but I miss having them at the courthouse this year, so, but.
Yeah, the second grade, the third grade, the second grade is always does a field trip downtown, makes it to the courthouse and the fire station, the police station and all that, even when they're, uh, field trips with Epic, so.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any correspondence, Stephanie? And that takes us to the consent agenda.
Madam President, uh, I need to recuse myself of the conflict of interest of the agenda.
Thank you. Madam President, I am ready to approve the consent agenda as presented. There is a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Um, what's your question?
Um, we just had the one bid on the buses, is that correct? Yes, if you remember, uh, last meeting, we rejected all bids for buses because we tried to, uh, get bids on some youth buses. That didn't materialize, so we resented out. This time, this is what we got back. Brand new buses, brand new buses, yeah. We just got the one and so, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions or discussion? Um, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Opposed? Motion carries? Do you have Alex anything to add? Or I guess we could leave them out there. And that takes us to the curriculum reports. And the first point up, I believe, is Janine Hans. Ms. Hans? And we can see your screen.
Would it help if you could hear me?
We can hear you, but now we can't see your screen.
Yes, I couldn't unmute until I stopped. There we go. Okay. Good evening. Um, tonight is here to update you on what we're doing with career technical education. Um, I will say I thought, you know, with a, with a unique school year, maybe we should step back and, and just make sure everything we put into place that work is going well and work well, that we can't stop making opportunities for kids. So we have more things going on. Um, so I wanted to tell you, um, new this year that we have students currently in, I updated you on last year, um, that were things we were working on, um, carpentry. Uh, we have three D.C.A.S. students who are going to garden evening in college, um, every day after their fifth hour class for carpentry. Um, and they will be done with the program at the end of the school year, um, with a certificate ready to go to work on a construction site. Um, we have four D.C.A.S. students in the manicuring program. And at the end of the school year, provided that they are eighteen years old and they take and pass an assessment at the state, um, they will be ready to, um, be a licensed manicurist. Um, there are four students ready to pass. Um, and then we also have the automotive program going at, um, the alternate education center. And I'm sorry, I don't know how many students are enrolled in that at the moment, um, but that's what we have going on. They're going really well. Um, but we couldn't just stop there. So next year, we have emergency medical responders starting with the community college, as well as a program for industrial machine mechanic. Um, I should clarify, but emergency medical responder, they will, um, receive their EMR certification at the end of the school year. Industrial machine mechanic, they will get twelve college credits, but that does not complete the degree, but does give them a very good start. Um, and the college is starting a new computer support specialist, um, degree program. And through that, we are going to be offering computer programming as a dual credit option. And the automotive class at the alternate center will now open to our D.C.A.S. students, students go over. And that's also in partnership with Holcomb, um, school district, they will be able to send their students as well. Um, oh, and that's my next point on my next slide. Sorry. So automotive will be open to students from various schools, um, so that we're partnering with other districts. We're also still developing our countywide advisory councils. Um, the team that's been working on those has paused due to COVID-19, um, and advisory councils this year went to, uh, email or Zoom. Um, so we did not pursue the countywide advisory councils, um, but that's still something we're working on. I think that our community, um, would appreciate only being asked to come to one meeting instead of going to one for, uh, U of D four five seven and one for Holcomb and one for the community college. So we're hoping to put all of those meetings together, um, so our all, all three entities can count the same meeting, um, so that we don't put such a strain on our community to be at all, all three. Um, and then we still operate under Perkins Five. Uh, we talked a lot about Perkins Five last year. We wrote Perkins Five last year. It was approved. Um, and so this is our first year of operating in Perkins Five, um, which includes, um, all of those bullet lists listed in our area. Um, we all had to work together to create that. Um, and stuff in our data, um, all comes together at the end of the year. This is our first year of a four-year cycle for Perkins Five. Um, and our partnerships with industry, we, um, are hosting weekly career chats in the career center. Um, Haley Armstrong has done a great job of setting this up and we'll hear some part of it today. Um, we've also been having classroom speakers via Zoom. Our teachers have been great at still reaching out and still doing what they can to, um, still get industry represented in their classrooms. Um, and then actually tomorrow, empirical is going to be coming. Um, do talk to our students tomorrow and Wednesday. Um, tomorrow they're going to talk to two classrooms and they're going to visit in the cafeteria to students. And then they will be available to students to sign up and speak with them in the career center on Wednesday. Um, one thing that we did that was new today, um, was the CCE scholars. It was a new program I was saying last year. Um, and we did not participate last year, but decided to participate this year. Um, it's to recognize students who are successful in career and technical education. Um, so it's for senior students, if I should say before I read this, it is extremely difficult. Uh, it is for senior students who have earned or are presently enrolled in three or more career and technical education credits with documentation of technical skill attainment. They have to have a CCE GPA of three point five or better in all of their CCE coursework. They need a hundred, or they need to have civic engagement, which means leading a group that's, um, made a change in their community or state or nation, or a hundred hours of outstanding community service with a verification letter. And they need eighty hours of workplace experience and they have to write an essay. Um, so I'm excited to announce that we had five students apply today for the CTE scholars. Um, so that will go to the state and they will, um, decide if they earn that distinction. Um, if we do have students who earned it, I definitely plan to bring them to award meeting, um, so that you can congratulate them. Um, it really is a very challenging application, and they have to do a lot of work to get the application ready, um, and develop the work involved in what the requirements are. Um, so I'm really excited to see if any of those five students earn the award. Um, and I am certainly excited to bring them to award meeting if they do. Um, and we had, sorry, there we go, we had a hundred and sixty seniors who met the academic requirement. So we have a hundred and sixty seniors that have three or more career and technical credits with a three point five or better GPA, um, which is fifty-four percent of our senior class, so I'm really excited about those numbers. Um, we have a lot of kids involved in career and technical education. Um, the other thing that I would just like to tell you is about a student who came in and talked to me about the award. We sent a letter to all a hundred and sixty seniors who met the requirement, telling them, you know, you meet, you meet the requirement, the first requirement, you check if you meet the rest, and I had a student come in and ask me about it, and, um, I looked at her transcript and she had a four point O in CTE and not a four point O in her academic classes. And I just reminded her, this is an award, not a scholarship, making sure she knew that. And she just said, "I know, and I'm so excited, I've always wanted an award." And I thought that was the cutest thing, uh, but it just helps me to understand that this program really is important to recognize our students who are succeeding academically in career and technical education, where they might not be getting that award in their other classes, but career tech ed is somewhere where they can sign. Um, so I'm excited that we have an opportunity to recognize those students. And I hope to get the award. Um, and then, I'm not going to read it to you, I just wanted to let you know that each one of our seventeen pathways all do have certificates that students can earn. Um, and so I went ahead and looked up a map here, there are three slides of these. Um, and you can get ahold of my presentation later and read them if you want to. Um, they're all industry standard, they, um, certifications that students would need if they were, um, working in the field. Some of them are more advanced than others, and that's one of my goals this year, is to do, um, work on finding, for some, for example, Adobe Photoshop is a very, very, very difficult certificate to earn, um, whereas some of the other ones don't take as much effort and studying and time. Um, so looking for something that can be a little more equitable for the Photoshop and graphic design students rather than, um, as compared to, for example, the students who get the first aid certification. First aid's very important, um, Photoshop is just, um, difficult, all of the Adobe certifications are very difficult. So looking for industry standard certifications that could replace those. Again, here's another one. Another goal of mine is to have, um, a dual credit option in each one of the pathways that we offer, so I just wanted to give you an estimate of where we are with that right now. Um, you can see on the right, those are all of the pathways that we do have dual credit opportunities in, and those are all with our community college, um, they all have at least one dual credit, um, option. On the left, though, uh, the pathways that we know dual credit opportunities currently, we have fashion apparel and interior design, graphic design, engineering and applied mathematics, and restaurant and event management, and all of those are, um, programs that the community college doesn't have a degree program that aligns, um, so we need to look outside of Garden City Community College. And I did put a little star on engineering and applied mathematics. I am exploring a potential option through Wichita State Tech, um, and actually talked with them today, got a lot of questions answered, so I hope in the future that you all have the opportunity to vote for us to be able to offer dual credit for our robotics course. Um, that will be through S B one fifty-five and will be free to our students. So I hope that is something that you will see soon. Um, and so, guys, as I said, we currently have seventeen pathways that we offer, and here is that list. We really do cover the majority of the career clusters, we, the only one we're missing is we don't have any pathways in the transportation, distribution, and logistics, um, career cluster. Uh, but we have at least one pathway in all of the other career clusters. Um, so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about where our opportunities for growth are. Um, we are seventh in the state as far as the number of pathways that we offer, um, mostly behind schools in Wichita and Kansas City, um, who offer up to about twenty-six. There's one school that reports forty-two, and I think that they have a number, because I don't think anyone has forty-two pathways. Um, so I would say we're sixth or seventh, um, depending on what their real number is. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to talk about, um, this is a different opportunity that we have. Um, I'd say our lowest hanging fruit is adding a pathway in biochemistry. We currently, if you notice in our last slide, we currently teach biomedical, it's almost the same. So we currently teach all of the required courses, um, and the reason why we haven't moved forward on that, though, is because we likely would have the same amount of kids interested in biomedical as we would biochemistry, and so we'd really just be taking, um, maybe spreading our numbers out across pathways rather than, um, having one strong pathway. And so we haven't moved forward in that, it's something that we definitely could look into doing. Um, I just don't exactly see that, um, you know, it might be a low hanging fruit, but I'm not sure what that group's based around it. Um, low hanging fruit is a pathway in travel and tourism. We would only need to add a half credit for, um, either foundations of travel and tourism or foundations of hospitality and lodging. Um, however, when we look at our Zello data, um, the interest in the hospitality cluster ranks tenth out of sixteen of the clusters. Um, yet when we look in that, I believe that, um, most of the students that are interested in that cluster are interested in the program that we already have, which is culinary, um, and restaurant event management. Um, so I'd like to look further into whether our students would be interested. My other concern is that we're, we don't have a, we're not really a travel destination, um, it's not a huge industry here. Um, and so again, um, that workforce involvement and industry help, um, might be a little challenging for what the pathway is actually laid out to do in there. Um, continuing with my fruit in the tree, um, these are reachable fruits. Um, so these pathways are pathways that we could offer if we added one credit, so that might be one or two classes, depending on how it's laid out. Um, and I put them in the order of student interest, um, so that you can see there. So family, community, and consumer services would be first, construction and design would be second, business management and entrepreneurship would be third, agribusiness systems would be fourth. You might be noticing, "Oh, we don't teach agribusiness systems." No, no, we teach comprehensive agriculture science, which are very similar and have a lot of similar classes. And that's the same with almost all of these. We have pathways with the students that meet students' interests, um, and there's a lot of overlap. Um, number five, fire technology and agriculture, number six, natural resources and environmental systems, number seven, programming and software development, number eight, government and public administration. Um, you'll notice cluster interest, out of these, they low at sixteen out of sixteen, um, not where students are interested, what are students are interested in doing. Um, that's based on Zello, um, so it's just not, you know, maybe they don't know what they're, you know, what that actually means, but... Anyway, and then, as I said, what are required to get this through, it would take a lot of effort to add these. Um, and they would require two credits, which could mean up to four classes. Um, and energy is two and a half, so that could be up to five classes that we need to offer. But again, in order of Zello interest, um, we actually have aviation production, number one there, energy, number two, animal science, number three, food products and processing systems, number four, plant systems, number five, information support and services, number six, network systems, number seven, aviation maintenance, number eight, and then mobile equipment maintenance has two different types, but first is automotive collision and second is automotive technology, and those are both at the bottom of the list. Um, so that kind of gives you an idea of where we could go if we added pathways and, um, kind of just the thought process of, you know, how we'll be thinking about if we would work to add more and where we would start. Um, and this is kind of weighing student interest versus, um, the, the teaching staff that we have, that, you know, their expertise in the area, um, and how much time we can give in the master schedule to do those classes. Um, and just weighing all of those things together. So, do you have any questions for me?
Uh, yes, very good presentation, and, uh, unless I missed a, a, a communication, I don't know that we've got copies of your fruity slides, and so I'm wondering if we can get ahold of those. Do we have them?
Yeah, I have a little more after we send it to you, and I can, um, make sure that Amanda gets that and send that on.
Because, obviously, again, it's just wonderful, all the work that you have done, and particularly envisioning, uh, what the possibilities are that's brought out in your fruitful slides. And, and I think that's really helpful for the community to think in those terms as well. Um, it's so on point, and I can't really begin to fathom all that comes together to try to figure out the overall scoreboard for how you fit in the number of options we provide our high schools, um, which was part of your comment there, a number of things have to come together. But it's still, uh, exciting to see all your work and the work of, of, of the broader team, and then to see how you put together those possibilities or that possibility thinking. And so I really appreciate that, I just want to comment on that and look forward to getting copies of those slides.
Yeah, I'll make sure to send them.
Thank you so much.
Data? Um, Jenny, on the data, on the Zello data with the student cluster interest, I just have a question about how, the difference with that. I know, it's funny, because just, we were talking about that with my girls the other day, and they get matched up with certain careers, I'm guessing by like, um, surveys that ask them a series of questions. But do they also have an opportunity on Zello to express what their interest is? And then, so what's the difference in them, in that data, if that's possible? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. Um, for this presentation, uh, and, um, I see data of what the students chose their interest to be, not what Zello matched them to be. Um, both of those are reported in the run, um, and Kaylee's presentation, um, and I, I assume Kelly and, um, Mary are also involved in that, um, that's coming after mine, might address that a little more, the difference between the two, so I don't want to, um, you know, step on top of their presentation. Um, I can definitely pull some data and email it to you, um, about just the difference between the students, how, um, Zello is doing this, we call, it's called Matchmaker, um, how it's sharing or telling the students what they, what it thinks they're interested in versus what the students think they're interested in. Um, that's something I can definitely pull, um, and send on to you. Um, I haven't actually looked into that too much, as to whether or not there was a discrepancy or not, but I can definitely find out.
You don't have to send that to me, Jenny, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to assume that that happens. Um, but, I mean, I, I, yeah, I assume that they probably have two separate ways of collecting that interest and matching. Otherwise, or maybe my daughter would choose to be a foreigner on her own, I don't know, she's pretty unique. Um, so just double checking, you don't have to pull that for me, though, thank you. Oh, I do have one other question, though.
Okay.
So you mentioned, uh, a possible, um, dual credit partnership with, uh, WSU, is that right? Was it WSU that you said?
Yes, uh, WSU Tech.
Tech, okay, thank you. And how easy or, like, how, how often are we reaching out to other colleges or even community colleges in our region with some of these, um, dual credit or dual, dual programs?
Um, you know, my first goal, um, in getting our, um, our dual credit option was to do as much as possible with Garden City Community College, um, because they are our local college and most of our students go there, um, or many of our students go there after high school. So, um, having it aligned with their program is, is number one for me in priority. Um, but at this point, as far as getting at least, meeting my goal of getting at least one dual credit option for each pathway, we have, we have done that for everything they're able to offer. Um, this is really the first year that I've looked into working with any other schools. Um, and the WSU Tech, um, did kind of just fall into our lap as something WSU Tech was already working on. Um, so it's a great opportunity, um, and as far as how often we'll be reaching out to other schools, I think it'll be a little more now, um, however, I still always want to, um, hold our relationship with Garden City Community College, um, at the highest level, um, because our partnership is so valuable. Um, so I would not want to go to another college to offer something that Garden City Community College would be able to offer.
That's great, and I just didn't know if those, if colleges actually reach out to you or if that's something that you have to kind of go out and do that legwork?
Um, it goes both ways. Um, this one, I was kind of looking for somewhere, um, that could do any of these, um, and actually they reached out to our robotic teacher, um, and he brought the opportunity to me. Um, so, well, we just kind of missed our paths, but caught each other, so connected, so. Again, I have a lot of questions about that that got answered today, so, um, I will be putting together some of our work to go to curriculum council and then on to you.
Sounds great, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Hands? Thank you, Ms. Hands, appreciate your time tonight, appreciate it, have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, you too.
That takes us to individual plans of study with Ms. Armstrong, Ms. Fitz, and Ms. Diamond.
Mary, do you want to go first? Okay. Hi, my name is Mary Diamond, and I am in school council at Forest Good Middle School.
And I'm Kelly, who has been in school council at Tennessee Middle School.
And we will be discussing the individual subject study at the middle school level. And we're going to begin first by showing you this short clip, and it will show you an introduction to Zello, and it will also show you some different features that Zello has. And it will also show you some different features that Zello has.
Mary, can you turn your volume up? It's really, really quiet, really soft here.
I tried, but it um, I need. Kelly, do you want to try it on your end?
Sure, if you want, and you're ready, then I'll share my screen.
Okay. That longer? Hello? Can you see those screens?
Oh, okay. Let me try to see it again.
I don't know if you can show it for you via.
Okay, that was, yep.
All right, let me do that. I, we may just not be able to show the video. Because it's not letting, it's not giving an active link for me. Did you um, send the slideshow at Mike? Yeah.
The link does work for us, let me go back and watch it.
Yeah, the, the link should work in your agendas, so if you, sorry to give you homework, but if you want to go through those demonstrations on your own, that might be better. It started out really good, everyone, just it's not, it's got the lighting again.
Okay, we can, we can move forward. So counselors and teachers meet with students around the school year to work on their individual plan of study, their IPS. Both classroom and mentoring time is utilized. Um, so counselors have developed criteria for students to follow in seventh and eighth grade years. And so during middle school year, students, they are exploring different careers. In seventh grade, they take the learning styles assessment. And this will identify what students' learning styles are, whether they are visual learners, um, tactile learners, or auditory learners. And they may be a combination of all three of those, one or more. And then they also take a matchmaker. And the matchmaker is an assessment for seventh graders, those who do in seventh grade. Um, they will ask, answer questions about their interests. And then matchmaker takes their answers and matches them with a list of careers that students will then explore, learn about. If they're interested in those careers, they save them through their plan. And they do that just simply by clicking a heart, it tells them that their, their career is safe. And they can review that information later on, they change it as they go. And then in eighth grade, students will take the personality style assessment. And then will ask some questions about their personality. And then it will show them how their personality fits in with the careers that they are interested in. And then at the end of eighth grade, of, after the, at the end of their IPS, since the world's, they're working on it, they will take the mission complete assessment. And that will just basically review our activity, I don't know if it's really assessment, but it's, it's an activity that helps them review all the information they learned through Zello during seventh and eighth grade. For career and educational planning, um, in seventh grade, we introduce students, we go into the classroom counselors do. And we introduce to them the IPS, what it is and how Zello meets the requirements for it. And then in eighth grade, we review that information to students. For career related activities for both seventh and eighth grade, we have a career fair at both middle schools. We do this every other year. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we weren't able to do that last year or this year, but next year we definitely plan to um, begin that again. And then the lessons that students complete in seventh grade are the learning styles lesson, the discovery and learning pathways, biases and career choices, and then defining success. And in eighth grade, students will learn about skills. They'll take the scorecard match's lesson, transition to high school, and self advocacy. Parents' involvement in the fall and spring due to COVID restrictions. Uh, parents weren't in the building and so parents were notified about Zello via email during parent teacher conference time. And then next year, Zello will have a parent portal, and we're excited about this, for parents to access their students' IPS information. And then students will present their IPS to their parents during mentoring. These meetings will, can be virtual or in person. So for data collection, at the end of the first semester, counselors are monitoring students' IPS progress. And then during second semester, we're ensuring that a hundred percent of students will complete their IPS portfolio. And that, sometimes that may just be asking their mentoring teachers to make sure they complete whatever lessons they have left to complete. Um, and then sometimes we call them in to the counseling area and have them complete their lessons there. Successes this school year. Students are now one on one with their iPad at the middle school level. So this has allowed students to use mentoring time to work on their IPS, which has reduced the loss of classroom time. And then the remote students were given a Zello video presentation by counselors. And this was shared by their remote teachers. And then the remote teachers are having students work on their Zello lessons during mentoring Zoom sessions. So ideas for the future include having students present their IPS during mentoring. Um, they can have, invite their parents to come in to present to them, or they could do it through Zoom. And another option would be for students to do this during parent teacher conferences. Whatever works best for their parent's schedule. And then, as Mary mentioned, we'll have the parent portal. And we'll provide information about that to parents um, through, during conferences, through email, through um, the Remind app. And we'll also have counselors be available at parent teacher conferences to help parents log into Zello and to answer any questions they may have around Zello. And then we also plan to use social media to promote, which we've done some of that this year. And then to promote Zello. And staff will also be trained next year in Zello in the fall. And we'll give all teachers access to the Zello program. This year, we opened it up, the options if teachers wanted access. Um, since this is the first time we use Zello in mentoring, kind of let teachers decide. But next year, we'll provide that to all teachers and we'll also have them facilitate the parent student IPS meetings.
Any questions on the middle school portion? Thank you ladies, Ms. Armstrong, if you want to go over the high school side. And Zello may need to circle back as well with the middle school side after you speak as well. Maybe some more questions?
Hey, you might be okay?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Um, so I was going to show you, um, Dana, um, what Jenny was talking about. So this would be a report of all the students in the high school. Um, the purple that suggested careers would be according to their um, matchmaker. And then these would be skills um, that were recorded based on um, how they answered their que, their questions about their skills, um, personality styles. And then when you go down here, you can see what stage careers. So these would be what students um, say that they are interested in or their favorite careers that they think. Um, and so she got the information from that area. As well as like, we have all kinds of information on there. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out um, about the weekly career chat. Jenny gave me um, a compliment, but I can't take that because it was actually Tammy Wilson from Big Brother's Big Sister. Um, she arranges all of the um, community people that come in um, weekly for those career chats. Um, our struggle has been getting students to come in and visit with these awesome community members. So um, we're really struggling this year with getting students um, to engage. I think um, through COVID, they've become so isolated and maybe comfortable enough that now they are not really engaging in the opportunities that we have for them. So um, that's been a struggle. Um, the other thing I wanted to say was that I worked literally fifteen days for Jenny and I didn't even know some of that information that she presented and it's so awesome. So, the struggle is getting other people to know it. Um, of course, the counselors will tell the students during enrollment that you know how then the students would communicate with parents. So, how are we going to get parents and then the public to know all this awesome opportunities that we have for the students? Um, and CTE, so I think that's something everybody needs to kind of think about and gather some ideas of. So now I'll go on with my presentation. And I know you guys were all the same last year and so I have no additional lesson for you tonight. Um, just a short little presentation. Um, so the tool and the process together are the individual plan of study. And um, we do have many college in core activities at the high school um, that I outlined last year. Several have been affected um, due to COVID restrictions such as our college signing conference, when we usually have fifty different schools in the gym and we weren't able to host that this year. Um, same thing with BASTA workshop. And even college application day looks a lot different. And so that affected um, the applications that we were able to help students um, submit. And so like I said before, students be very withdrawn. And it's very hard to motivate them to participate in different opportunities that we have. Um, Zello, um, all of our staff have accounts in um, Zello and can look up any student. So even their third hour students, they can see, uh, maybe they're struggling and they can look that student up and say, oh, well, you know, their learning style is this and I teach mostly in auditory or whatever and try to differentiate their learning. Um, then they also, of course, we encourage them to create groups for their mentor students so that they can track the progress of their mentor students. Um, we assign one lesson um, each month. That's what we've been doing this year. Um, so students don't have to actually do it on that particular Wednesday, they can do it anytime um, in that month. Uh, we just wanted them to have kind of a timeline so they weren't trying to like squeeze it all in in January. But I do think a lot of people actually ended up doing it that way. Um, as we return back to in-person school in September, um, we were focusing on a lot of socially emotional um, topics. Um, suicide awareness was also in September. Um, and so we had a lot of education about that. Um, I also utilized the Kansas Youth Health Guide and we talked about coping skills, self-care and stress. Um, and so then in October, we got rolling with different um, with the Zello lessons. And all students were supposed to complete the skills lab summary, that was a new um, item that Zello had this year. Um, so it's not just about their interest or their personality or their learning, but now they're also talking about their skills. Um, because maybe if student is interested in studying art, but then they rate themselves very low on those skills. So maybe that's not a good career match. Um, so I think that's important. And then in November, um, each grade had a couple different signs or lessons to do. Um, when we went to remote learning in December, um, we just had kind of a makeup month where students could work on anything they still needed to get done. And then in January, we had a new lesson. And I also um, gave information to teachers to go over with their students about service activities here in Garden City. Um, how to log their service hours, where to look for ser, service opportunities. And it's a, it would be good to put that into Zello as well, there's a category to put that in there. Um, so they can keep track of that. Um, but we also have a school class interview that they can do. I think that's important. And that's one of the rubric where's that we're kind of low on uh, for our school district is involving um, community and service opportunities for our students. Um, and then this month, students worked on their individual plan of study presentation. And they were encouraged to do that with their parents um, last week via Zoom with their teacher. Or um, they could do it independently at home and then the parents could sign um, a form stating that they used that um, IPS. And then the students were supposed to turn that back into their teacher. And then we will continue with some more lessons um, the rest of the school year. Um, it is part of our um, college and career um, preparedness curriculum. And so we want to make sure that students are getting everything um, that could help them. So our completion rate so far, thirty-six percent of our students are all complete with their lessons up to this point. And fifty-one percent are in progress and thirteen percent have not started it yet. Um, I'm really pretty happy with that right now. Um, it's a struggle in a school of our size and with this, you know, many teachers and students and um, just getting everybody on the same page. Our school does very well in areas of like district planning, our curriculum, our resources that we have. Um, we're very high um, in our pathways and our opportunities. Um, we're very high, um, in our pathways and our opportunities. Um, we do have a difficulty with mapping out and planning the high school and post-secondary courses. That's also one of the rubric areas, um, that, um, Zello can do. Um, but we've tried it in the past and it's just really complex with all of the offerings. You know, we have over, you know, hundreds and hundreds of courses. And so say, um, like, um, R O T C can count for four different credits. So it doesn't just go into one particular page on a student, say electronic credit check in Zello. Um, the same thing like with English. We have honors English, we have regular English, we have special ed English, we have E S L English. And getting those all in was really just, um, impossible. So, um, we still need to try to think of maybe, um, a way to do that without using Zello. Um, getting students to make like a four-year plan as part of what courses they want to take. Um, but then the, um, the I P S rubric also wants us to map out post-secondary classes. So depending on what college student's going to go into, what their major's going to be in, they want them to select classes. So that would be like an immeasurable amount of possibilities. Um, it is, like I said, a struggle communicating about the I P S, um, with parents more than twice a year. Um, in the past few years, we've done it in the spring conferences, but they would like, the I P S rubric would like us to do it twice a year. So how would we fit that in and how would we make that happen? Um, I don't really think that students and families are fully invested in I P S or Zello and see its value. I think they kind of check it off, um, because we say they have to do it. Um, but it's awesome, the things that we can look up and find. And we even put all of our scholarships in there. Students can go directly to file their BASTAs through the Zello as well, college planning area. Um, so it's just really great and we just need students to use it more and families to get more used to it and refer to it more. Um, so moving forward, I think we just need to gather and generate ideas to, um, address some of those problem areas. Possibly trying to incorporate Zello into like regular curricular areas. Um, maybe encourage CTE teachers to use live Zello more in their classes. Um, one of the lessons the years we'll do is, um, build a resume in spring. Um, and it talks about how to get a job and things like that as well. Um, we definitely need to, um, promote community service and continue to foster relationships with different community organizations. Um, I've contacted or our secretary has contacted all the nonprofits in Garden City and, um, asked for them to, you know, give us any, um, suggestions of what students could do for community service. So I think that's it. Does anybody have questions for me?
Any questions, Dana? I'm sorry if I'm yelling at you. I feel like I'm kind of so into the speaker, but, um, one of my questions is, um, is Zello offered in various languages?
No.
Does it have that capability or is it just something we don't ask?
It is offered in Spanish. It is offered in Spanish.
And we currently have that like running right now?
Yes, um, any student that would prefer to fill out the Zello information, they can do so in Spanish.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? I would like to say that I've had like good conversations about some of the career stuff when my kids bring it up. But as a parent, it doesn't, like, it's not something that, uh, even as a board member and I know that they are doing that, it's not something that I just ask them about. Um, but when it did come up, it has some related conversations. So, um, I'm going to brainstorm because I think it does have a lot of value and like there should be better parental involvement. I'm excited for that parent portal that that will be fun, I think.
Kind of going along those lines, I, I think it also depends on the kid too. Cause I've got one who was really into it and did a really good job and had a really good conversation using Zello. And then I had another one who was like, oh, I was supposed to fill this out. And my conversation with that teacher lasted five minutes. So I think it also depends on who you have to engaging with it. But it seems like I was really excited by it and I, when we invested in it as well. Like, we've had it for what, two years now with Dr. Garland?
At least.
So.
Before Zello, it was called Career Cruising and so we've had it, um, ten plus years or so.
I knew it was Career Cruising before and it's, was, was it the exact same and just changed its name to Zello? Or is it, was it two different platforms?
They changed the name and they, they improved it and they, they add new things all the time, so.
Yeah.
I have a question. Um, do we know how many career options are available through Zello?
Yes, they sent me an email today and answering one of my questions. And let's see here. Five hundred and eighty-six careers.
That's wonderful. Mark, do you have a question?
Not really a question. I didn't really know what to bring up now or in the, for discussion, but, but this tool that the team has invested a lot into, uh, we just sort of had a walkthrough on the rigor and the relevance, so to speak, of, of that tool for our high school kids. And when we talk about, and when we have a discussion potentially, certainly the team has a discussion on how to get the word out and get people engaged in the tool. I mean, this is up there with athletic activities, you know, and I, I don't want to go there about which is more important. But certainly when someone goes on our website and we're, we talk in terms of high school activities, that's a, one of the reasons we went to a single high school instead of two high schools, I think, was so the community could come around and support what we are doing with our young adults in getting them ready for career or college. And, and so as an outside, they're sort of listening to the update. Did I say it that way? Because there's been so much work into the implementation, it's obvious. But I don't know why we wouldn't have that on our website for the high school. And maybe we do, but right up there with our activities because it is as important, if not more important, to the future of those young folks. And so when people touch base with U S D four-five-seven and, and, and our high school activities and even our middle school activities, you know, why wouldn't it be right up there promoted? Uh, to help the mindset on, uh, on the social media that this is as important as, as, um, as the sports and the other activities. We're diverse in our activities. We're certainly diverse in our career paths and opportunities. Uh, how to get that out there is that conversation that, that we just heard is the ongoing question. And I don't know why that wouldn't be real apparent in our, in our electronic face as well as our, our step into the high school. At one point in time, we had the Blue Ribbon High School. Um, and that was, that was what it was, but at the same time, uh, it's a tremendous high school, not only in brick and mortar, but in our staff and our opportunities for our young folks. So how to get that message across ought to be evident physically, both online and, and at the schools. And, but that's easy to say and again, it comes back to, uh, how do we do it? Who's going to do it? Uh, but what we heard today is just fabulous. Uh, and it's, it's exciting to see how the teachers and the teams are working to, to make it more effective. And the counselors particularly, not only to leave anybody out, the whole team. So that was just, I went on and I didn't mean to, but that's just what I'm thinking here as I listen to that is.
Like with, specifically with the Zello or with both the CTE at presentation and with the individual?
Well, Zello is the tool.
Okay.
And, uh, CTE is, is the pathway, is, uh, for the, you know, the individual study. That, you know, we, uh, it's, it's a cultural and an educational environment. How do you get all those two in there? I think our tools.
Yeah, they're, they're very, they're very connected. Um, because Zello does have, it focuses on the career clusters, which our pathways are in the career clusters. And that should be how students are choosing their elective, um, their academies. It's, our whole school is really designed around the career clusters, pathways, and Zello can work through all of those things.
That's the impression in your presentation that I got and that's, that is so exciting because it seems to simplify what is a very complex, uh, playing field, for lack of a better term. And, and so it's exciting.
But I do have a question with that because in the middle school, it's part of the curriculum in mentoring, correct? And they, and it's somewhat, I mean, I know mentoring is pass fail, but when I see skyward grade, there is a grade. And when I read on the high school, it says students are asked to complete, but it's not a requirement, right? Or is it?
Um, we, I think some teachers make it an assignment in their fifth-hour class. Not all teachers do that. Um, it has been stressed to teachers how important getting students to complete this is. Um.
But they're not.
So I don't know all the tricks that they have been using to get the students to do it. I don't know.
But mentoring isn't a pass fail or even, I mean, it's not graded and it's not pass fail, right? At the high school?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Is the reason why I mentioned that? I remember, um, at least when I was paying more attention to the K H Facebook page, I saw things about Zello on Facebook occasionally. Um, like something's coming up or something like that. So I know it's been on Facebook and their social media at, at one point where it's, or there is some comments. Um, and then, I mean, I don't remember, and Ms. Armstrong, maybe you can correct me. Um, I don't know if I've specifically seen it with, um, Garden City High School's Facebook page, but I've known that Ms. Hands has put, posted quite a bit about CTE things. So like the career chats that she mentioned and other things that she's doing and opportunities that students have there. So that's why I was asking you for clarification about what you were asking about with social media. So, um, because, I mean, I've seen, you know, every Tuesday, the different people that are being invited for the career chat and things like that.
Well, some of my comments are, they're just being sort of drawn into the, I guess, the, the obvious, uh, utility of this.
Right.
And, um, and recognizing how tough it is sometimes to get your young ones to engage.
Yeah.
Uh, and that can be personality driven as much as anything. And there are various significant relationships of, of teachers and, and students, other fellow students. But it's, it's just, uh, I guess my comment was just getting drawn into the presentation itself and its utility. And I just wonder, it's not criticism by any means, it's just sort of, uh, uh, cheerleading the initiative, that, uh, possibility thinking and the obvious questions that were posed of, you know, how do we continue to work to get the word out?
Yeah, I do all of the posting on, um, the counselor's Facebook page. I do include Zello information in our monthly newsletter usually. Um, and as far as like the college reps that come and the career chats and so forth, I always post those on both Facebook and Twitter. I send them in an email to students and parents. I send them in an email to teachers. I put them on our daily morning announcements that are read to the students and then I have it on a sign outside of the career center. And so I feel like I've exhausted all of my communication pathways.
Well, is it, is it regularly reviewed? Is it something reviewable on, on our, uh, continuing yet opportunities for, for our teachers? Or, um, embedded training? If that makes sense, I may not be using the right term, but, um, when we have special times for teachers to, to, um, continue, uh, put in, uh, continue to get.
Oh, the digital team?
Yes. Yeah, I, it's just, uh, we ought to be, uh, continuing, and it seems like we are, continuing to find all the ways possible to, just like we want to improve our football team and our, and that program and our other activities that, that we have with, uh, robotics and, and other groups. It's fabulous. We can only do so much and it's, it's sort of resource driven. Um, but the tool here that we've elected to utilize, uh, is, uh, is, and we want people to have, it'd be ideal if we could have our all team members and students to have that concept before then as often as possible. It seems to be their, um, their way to manage their individual, um, educational experience.
I, I think one of the things that we've learned here is that we need to, we need to do a better job institutionalizing this tool as a, as a, the center point of, of what people use at the high school. And, um, we're, uh, I think, prepared to, to make some changes to move that direction. Certainly communication's a part of it, um, but it's really got to be, become something that people recognize that's the place to go, um, when they're having the conversations about what their interests might be, what classes they might sign up for, what life after post-secondary might look like when they want to explore options and not necessarily just have to wait until that's an assignment and, and do that. And that won't happen overnight. Um, uh, but I think we're, uh, we recognize that and, and that, uh, that's one of the areas we need to do better in, um, in order to really fully utilize the power of the tool and really to help our kids. Um, because it's about creating a post-secondary plan, whether that's four-year university or that's going straight to the workforce. Um, uh, and, and helping kids and parents understand options and what those things might look like, so.
Again, it's Jenny's presentation on, it's just, it's fabulous, the team that we have. And, uh, I know we've got awesome teachers that are out there. And so, uh, it's just kind of exciting, a series of presentations that I, in my humble opinion.
Anything else? Thank you, ladies. Appreciate your time this evening. Great presentation and excellent work that you guys are doing for our kids. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck with everything that you're doing. Glenda, are you taking up the U S R plan update?
Hi, little family, there we go. I've shared your screen. I'll share mine.
Great. Great.
And Ashley, this is going to be a team presentation. We did a lot of collaborating on this, so we're going to let KJ start it out.
All right, so, you know, everything I like to talk about buckets. One of the things that we wanted to help explain is all the different buckets of funding that are kind of coming to light because of the pandemic. Some of these similar names or different terminology, so we just kind of wanted to clear it up for you a little bit. So the first round of funding that we received, some people call it CARES dollars, some people call it EFR1 funding. EXR stands for elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. So obviously, why I'm using exact names because there's a whole lot simpler. The CARES or the EFR1 funding is money that we receive based on our Title I allocation. And originally, the guidance that we were given on how it can be spent, if anything that can be spent, the Title I fund money can be spent on, we can spend these dollars on. We could also use it to address anything related to COVID and address the concerns of CTE or sanitation items, technology for students, summer programs, outer school programs. And these dollars need to be spent by 2022. And we brought to you our EFRs funding recommendations towards the beginning of the school year. And we'll kind of talk a little bit about what those dollars we can spend on in one of the later slides. But that's kind of how this all got started, and the original bucket of funding that we received. Then the second phase went through, and EFR2 funding became available to us. And that funding can be spent on any of those things that EFR1 can be spent on with a few additions. Obviously, they have become aware that like remote learning, there's probably going to be some loss in learning for students. And so how do we keep all students on grade level? We want to spend the dollars there. We can also use it to address facilities, improvements that would help to reduce the transmission of the virus, which also would include projects which would address the indoor air quality, which we talked about in one of our previous meetings. And that's why we are considering carving out some of those dollars for some of our HVAC systems to kind of help with that indoor air quality. And so those all have to be spent by 2023. And we are working right now on a plan of how we would recommend spending those dollars, and we'll bring that to you in a later meeting. And then there is considerable talk about EFR3 funding. We don't have any final word on that yet, but if that funding does become available, our understanding is that it would be spent by 2024. So obviously, if we are looking at all these different buckets of funding and how we can spend them, we want to make sure that we're utilizing these dollars in a timely manner, but in an appropriate manner to address the needs of our students. So what did we do with the initial round of CARES money? And we also received some PRF money from the county, so all these wonderful different sources we received. We've got them kind of listed somewhere. Some of the staffing things that we did was we did add nurses and nurse parents so that we could have some additional support related to COVID. It included things like when we needed to do screenings when we first started school, we needed additional people to be able to take temperatures and ask questions and those things like that. We also had our after-school program for our elementary students. We continued that. We used to have KRR and a few schools. And when that funding went away, we were able to utilize these CARES or EFR1 dollars to put an after-school program in all of our elementary technology. Again, we zoom and remind those are apps that we use continuously now since the pandemic. And then just some strategies from Dreambox and MyOnReader, you know, just trying to go remote with all of these options. But we've, as we've heard earlier from the library presentation off the ground, just very different programs that they're using to keep students engaged while we're on the remote path or not being able to be in person all the time. And then I think this next one just kind of clarifies a little bit more how these funds are distributed. And again, it's based on a Title I allocation. And our Title I funding is provided to, I think, on a number of apparatus students that we have. They're a little bit set aside for state-level activities, and it talks in here about only 0.5% of the total state A's may be used for administration activities. However, I can tell you, we won't use any of ours for administration activities. All of our dollars will be spent for something other than administration. So that's not anything that we want to use any of these EFR dollars for.
We met with the principals and talked about what appropriate goals would be and what were the categories of needs that they were seeing in schools. We definitely want students to be able to master grade-level skills at the appropriate levels. So this could be gapping for our students with special needs or hard English level learners. But overall, the principals identify time, more time with the kids, the people to do the interventions and implement the strategies, and then the strategies that will work with the kids. Where are our kids? This was our fall and winter back bridge data from this year. The blue is at grade level and the red is below grade level in reading. For reading, this is pre-K through 11 data, 11th grade data. And just noting that, like Katie said, try to figure out where to spend this money and make sure that it has a good purpose. This is going to take a couple of years, three years for our kids to catch up. And we don't want to spend all of those dollars too quickly. We want to spend it wisely and make sure we do it right and take the time to do it right.
Question?
These are our students' first.
I'm sorry, I did a rep, but you said what the origin of these numbers are on this slide. Can you repeat that, please?
So these are, these are the test scores on pre-teen back bridge data. This was reading, pre-K through grade 11.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. This is math, and it is pre-K through eighth grade. So again, the blue is at grade level and the red is below grade level. When we discuss time, one of the very obvious things that came out of the discussion is everybody wants to fifteen minutes back in the day when we talked to the principals that we took out so that the teachers could do that collaborating and phone calling with parents. That time can come back in and perhaps give us a little bit more intervention time. And we're also exploring and having conversations about where there might be other ways to pick up time. KJ mentioned the nurses, but one of the huge pieces that we're looking at are people and staff and these. We already have the nurse assistance, the EGR program. He's hired another person in the personnel office, so those are already positions that we've added this year that we feel pretty strongly that we'd like to continue with the next round of funding and carry those on for the next year or two. In the Office of Instruction, the link grant is going away. You'll hear in a slide later that we're looking at the virtual options. We feel pretty strongly we'd like to keep NICARAM as a technology assistant for instruction. So that is something that could help be spent by the EFR dollars. In addition to that, the new things that we've been talking about with the principals, intervention pairs that help provide that service and have our students smaller, and also be able to be very specific about what students need and how we're doing to help students. We're looking at a wellness specialist position. And you'll see when we talk about navigating next that that is a focus for the State Department. And then we're also looking at, do we need additional counselors or social workers to help with instructional needs? Strategies and technology, KJ touched on this as well, some of the things that we started this year that we feel could really take huge dividends and we'd like to continue for the next couple of years. Current talking points, when we get together in our group, summer opportunities. Originally, we can talk about the KRR or the Engage program via two-week summer program. We'd like to go ahead and make that a four-week summer program. We're also talking about the possibility of some kind of a summer reading challenge with the MyOnReader program, something that will get kids reading more. In core instruction, getting on that rigor that is a board goal. We are having conversations with the folks from the New Teacher Project and bringing them back to look at possibly time with principals, kind of a PLC for principals, if you will. They offer a summer group camp where the teachers actually work with the kids and with the New Teacher Project folks to talk about what a grade level assignment looks like, what do our kids need, and how do we evaluate whether this was a quality must-its? Our secondary folks are looking at the Marzano Proficiency Based Recovery Program. I did leave that on the table for you folks to take a look at what they're doing. This is a standard-based approach to really identifying, again, drill down what kids are actually missing. So they may not need to repeat their whole class if they fail the class. They may be toward three standards in that class that they haven't been able to master. So we can focus in specifically on that standard, and then there's a way to show whether they mastered those standards. And then the last thing is looking at a free algebra class for the ninth grade students that are behind in math. Additional talking points include what we can do in professional development. So continue a lot of what we're doing, but again, I have on there the monthly support for principals, training grade level and lead teachers and instructional strategies, being able to have that deep data dive so we exactly know. So it's not just reading, I mentioned, is it phonics-based or is it comprehension? What specific strategy does it need that just make everybody get a reading class, an additional reading class? Instructional approaches, working on log crews and coaching and PLCs. So we're actually, again, working with those teachers on what is from, what is a quality assignment? Kind of one of my findings is I said, one of the things would probably be good would be to clean out the file. I've missed in a lot of the schools because I know when I was a teacher, I saved everything. So we don't want to use those assignments that are twenty years old or maybe were theirs from five years ago. We want to use our quality assignments that we have at those with our curriculum. Also on your tables, you have a Navigating Next document. It's that you can perhaps see it better and perhaps follow along this next part of the presentation. We'll go through each of these areas. We're going to let Keith start it off.
So one of the recommendations in the Navigating Next document is to have your staff vaccinated. Just like to take this opportunity to give a huge shout out to Colleen Greed and her staff at the Fenton County Health Department. On the eighteenth and nineteenth of last month, we were able to coordinate with them to have over eight hundred educators in our community vaccinated. USC 457 was a happy recipient of five hundred and seventy-five of our employees to receive those vaccinations. Also, I'd like to give a big shout out to Michelle Scholl and our nursing staff. This coordination probably wouldn't have went as smoothly, but our nurses went down and helped, and so does Michelle, helped administer those vaccines. I know from myself personally and talking to others who were a part of that throughout those two days, it went off without a hitch, very well done, very well organized. So just real big thank you to them. It worked out great. Maybe the timing was late in some people's perspective because we've been hearing about other places in surrounding areas having their educators vaccinated before us. But we were able to do it, butted up next to a weekend, which helped ensure that we were able to continue to have school as normal as possible. And then also, if you fast forward, second vaccinations should be administered anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty-two days, and that will work out to be our two days of spring break this year. So, which leads me to the next bullet point. Second vaccinations will happen. Again, the pre-planning and coordination to do the first vaccine, our employees will follow that same schedule over the course of those two days to receive their second shot if they choose to do so. And then after that, we've outlined guidelines for them. If they are going to be out of town or miss their opportunity to do it on those two spring break days, they still will be eligible to receive that shot, but they would just make arrangements themselves to schedule that appointment through Fenton County Health. So we were super pleased with the way that went in this last month.
And the second part of the fiscal and operational management piece is basically have a plan for how we're going to spend these dollars. And we talked about it before, as the principal had written in a plan, that when we think about this, we think about it in three buckets, again. The first one being we want to take advantage of the opportunity to spend some of those dollars, maybe carve those off the top, so to speak, and be of our process for upgrading our HVAC systems and address the indoor air quality and make that as good as we can as quickly as possible. Glenda touched on the COVID-related positions, and this could be anything from positions we already have to positions that we'd like to add, the wellness, a bonus position. Maybe some additional counselors if we determine that that's the best place to use some of those resources. But the bulk of those dollars will ultimately go to instructional programs to best get all the grades, all students on grade level. And so that will take some time to figure out where we are, if that's the situation, where our students are, and what the best way is to get them to that next level where they need to be. And so that is where we, most of those dollars is going to go after we take off the other two buckets.
Under communication and engagement with families, the state encourages us to remain engaged with our students. We did just finish this morning a survey for parents to tell us what they were thinking about a possible virtual option next year. And while that will be a whole separate presentation down the road, I will tell you that we had 1,760 responses with forty percent of those saying, yes, they would like a virtual option next year. So I was very pleased with the amount of responses that we had, and it was pretty well divided over all three levels, so that was also a good thing. And we did use the Remind app to get that out to all parents. Another tool that's been very, very beneficial. They encourage parent teacher conferences, which we just did, and it was the change in the negotiating agreement. This year, our teachers have the flexibility to continue to work on those parent competes through the remainder of the full year. Is there anything with that, Keith, that I'm not saying right? Okay. The other thing that we're looking at is, for us, for our district, is transition activities. So what does it look like for a preschooler to transition to kind of our field or fourth grade to intermediate, sixth and middle, those types of things? So we're now exploring possible evening activities where parents can visit in small groups, virtual options where we make videos and show the school, things like that that will be able to kind of showcase and make parents feel welcome, our students feel welcome, and that is a kind of transition factor this year. The next section on the Navigating Next document is assessing student learning. This list is currently what we have to assess where our kids are at. So I did show you the back bridge data, but we have lots of people to actually gather to see how our kids are functioning in the classroom and are they where we want them to be. Academic delivery and support. I heard Dr. Watson present this document, and he was very adamant that we do everything we can for the kids that are closest to leaving us and going out into the world of work or the college world in some capacity. Because they are the ones that missed a chunk last year of their junior year, and now we need to make sure that they have what they deserve for. I think our high school has been working very, very hard in some capacity with all of their counselors and their staff. I visit with Mr. Norrie frequently, and they are really working hard. I also left you an article on your table of some kudos to Jenny Hand, I know she spoke earlier, but there was also a KJ article on how well we are doing for those secondary students getting college career classes for our kids that don't cost them any... in getting college career classes for our kids that don't cost them anything. So I think we're really trying to work hard on that. The other thing was design extended learning opportunities that I mentioned earlier. We are working on what kinds of things we can do in the summer. I also know that K H is looking at an active school tutoring program to help. So again, extending that learning opportunity, bringing to different ways. And then I mentioned earlier also the New Teacher Project and perhaps some different opportunities with them. In the academic delivery and support area, the support incoming preschool kindergarten for third grade students, we are hoping to offer a two or three day activities in the summer where students come in. They have different stations set up so parents can take their students through these different activities. And then they can fill out that A S Q information so that we have that in our participation rate. Hopefully then we'll go along that as well. We could also pass out brochures, chart information, lots of things that incoming families will need to do, kind of cool goody bags, if you will. So we're looking at that right now. We actually have one of our students in the K F leadership class that's working on some additional activities for this. We've had videos made of all of our schools, a date and a live kindergarten, so we could use those now with our preschool kids and show those over at our field that this is what you want to be doing next year. Social emotional. There's a rubric that the state puts out that we have to fill out. I guess we don't have to, but it looks good if we do and we did. For our accreditation cycle. And the state said on the accountability, state accountability profile for our district that tells us how to come into that area. We filled out the social emotional rubric and there are four levels, gold, silver, bronze and copper. And we anticipate receiving the bronze level recognition. So we're doing a lot of quick things, but one of the things that came out that we weren't doing is we weren't doing enough for staff, social emotional. So that is why you see now in a couple of slides that we need to consider around the support position, more activity for our staff to support them as well. Some of the things we are doing, you have safer staff, have counselors based on safer status. We continue to utilize the social emotional advisory group. They're currently looking at our data of child reading factors. We have now a column responsive team that has been trained. There are five of them that have been trained and they have now come back and trained. Everybody else in the district, anybody that wants those of regulation training, for example, in their building. We now have the local headquarters, if you will. The partner with Columbus Mental Health Center is one of the things that you will see if you read the navigating next document. And we have had that every now and then, eight years and next year. The first year we had five buildings and this year we have offered it to all but two of our elementarys. And I hope that we can be one hundred percent next year. And of course, you saw earlier, one of the other things we want to consider is we need to add one counselor to this level.
Glenda.
Yes.
Could you talk to us a little bit about that wellness support position, kind of what you're seeing with that? What your vision looks like, what that position would look like?
Keith, do you have job description available? And I know Tracy Johnson is working on that and has submitted what she thinks might be a job description for that. And it encompasses the nurses, the special ed, Josh was involved in developing that and then Tracy Johnson. So those three have developed that. I don't remember a lot of particulars, but we'll see if Keith can find it.
Glenda, just jumping while he's looking for it. I really think that what we were trying to focus on there was trying to get support for our staff. Knowing that this is a really difficult time, there's lots of stress. You know, what can we do to help support our staff? Whether it be making sure they know what resources are available to them, you know, making sure that they understand what benefits they have and if there's something that, you know, they currently could be using, that they're maybe not using to help with their stress level. That was really one of the things that we were really trying to focus on is just having that liaison that someone could go to really to ask questions of about, I'm really stressed about this or I'm having these issues. What can I do to support, what can we do to support our employees through difficult times?
Actually, K J covered it really nicely. Help with wellness grants, collaborate with community health organizations, providing resources to our staff, monthly onsite visits, being out in the building, talking to staff members, checking in on their wellness, things that they might need. Just overall, in general, promoting a good community health or community event that might support our staff in those ways are some of the things that we have been listed and talking about with job duties.
Is that something that was requested from teachers? Or staff, I should say? Our staff felt like we needed that?
I think in talking to our principals, and I'll let Keith jump in here too, but in talking to our principals, I think they saw the steps on the staff this year. Many of them made goody bags where their staff periodically left notes on their cars. Anything they could do to kind of boost staff morale, especially on times when we were hybrid or not sure what level we were going to be at. I know those kinds of uncertainties really weighed on our staff.
And just in addition to self-care in general Dana is a need, you know, locally for sure, but nationally with stress in teaching, different events through COVID, the pandemic, those kinds of things have all been brought to the forefront. And so it's just another step to try to promote self-care and wellness, but also add the retention or support for our staff to know that we're taking steps to take care of them in all kinds of situations.
And initially, I think Tracy Johnson brought an idea to us a while back about, you know, we have a wellness plan and we've had that for a number of years. And that's always kind of fallen on nutrition. I don't know exactly why it fell there, but she's done a nice job with managing that. But it's kind of something that doesn't get her full attention because it's not really her main job. And so we were looking for ways to maybe be able to put a little more emphasis on that. When COVID came along, it has kind of exacerbated the need to focus on that with staff. And so that's where the idea, and I should tell you too, the ideas that are here, none of these are set in stone. What we're trying to do tonight is paint you a picture of some of the things that we're looking at as we begin to consider what's going to be the best ways to use these E S R funds. And I think it's been mentioned a number of times, kind of three main buckets. And that is, you know, some of the physical infrastructure pieces that will probably be a small part of those E S R dollars that are important to having safe and healthy environments going forward. There are some positions that have become critical as a result of COVID. And then, but the vast majority of this is really going to go to help and fill the gap with kids who are behind here as we come out of this from COVID and both from an academic and a social emotional standpoint.
I guess with that, my question is, it seems like this is a, we're working with principals and leadership staff when we're trying to develop this. And my question is, have we asked teachers, have we got teachers input at any
Not yet.
level in terms of what their thoughts and they would, there's no doubt, I think that we know they have extra stress, but is this what they feel they need?
Right, and that's our next step. That's what's going to happen over the next couple of months is we're going to be working with building leaders to have them work with teachers directly to find out what does it really take to have every kid at grade level? What are things going to need to look like in order for that to happen? And again, tonight, we're just trying to give you a ten thousand foot overview of this is what it could look like. You're hearing a lot out there in the national news that schools have all this money available and they aren't spending any of that money. Well, we have spent a little bit of that money and we have an after-school program that's in process. We have a summer program that's already planned and we're moving towards that. So we haven't spent all that initial money yet because we developed a plan to kind of spread that out over a year. But there's a reason why those dollars are set up where we didn't have to spend it all until 2022, 2023, and ultimately if E S R three comes about, probably 2024. So we are, we definitely will be engaging staff in what's the best way to help fill those gaps for kids.
Do you have a timeline set up for that? Because I feel like we were communicated in the fall that there'd be some, an opportunity for teachers to give some input on how they were doing and what they were needing and it kind of got pushed back is what I feel like. At one time there, it was communicated, we'd have a survey, something got to teachers and it didn't really. So is there a timeline for what Dana was asking about or?
So the E S R money we've just learned about here relatively recently and we're still hearing about what the requirements are from the state. I think Jennifer, what you're maybe referring to is we did ask teachers for some feedback about hybrid learning when we did back in, Glenda, do you remember when that was, back in November, December?
November, November was hybrid and December was remote.
And we used a tool that's kind of a little more open-ended and I'm not sure we really got the kind of feedback about what we were kind of truly, truly looking at. We tried something new and I'm not sure that it was as helpful about what, how hybrid learning had went as.
Was that something you saw at the board?
I don't know that we ever did because we're struggling with how to get reports out of it. So, but that was, I think that's what we were talking about at that point was we were gathering feedback about how hybrid, hybrid learning went.
And I get ones about money, but I feel like the money ties into what the teachers are needing or giving.
I totally agree and we, our plan is to involve teachers in this conversation. But like I said, we're still, we're still getting direction from the state on what we're going to have to do to actually apply for and get the dollars. And so we're just trying to, again, if you would think of it in three general areas, a small carve-out for some of those facilities things, the pieces we've had to add as a result of COVID, mainly people, mainly physicians. And then the vast majority of the rest of the dollars for what do we do to fill that gap, both academically and socially emotionally, so that all kids can be at or above grade level is really what the, and so there will be conversations with teachers in individual buildings about what's the best way to get there.
And again, this is a review, you know, in the context of the Kansas Education Action Frame. As I understand it, and so we're going through those different areas.
Right, and we're not, and we're not asking you to approve anything. We're a ways away from being able to approve anything. We just want you to know we are doing something. As this stuff is coming out, we are taking that information in and we are working on developing a plan.
I'm really interested to see how staff across the board would answer on wellness support because you know, our staff give and give just by the nature of the education field, they give and give and give. And a lot of times I don't necessarily think they all, well, anybody really understands what that impact has on themselves. So any kind of support that we could have for staff across the board, I think is really important. So I'll be curious to see what they say they need.
You know, in this pause, I also want to ask another quick question that has to do with social emotional. In previous board meetings, we've heard about some training opportunities for teachers on emotional first aid. I think it was something like that, social emotional first aid.
Mental health first aid.
Mental health, excuse me, first aid, thank you. And I thought that was very interesting and I guess I heard that as a first step to try to address that in the classroom for the kids anyway, just to sort of scaffold that up. The current discussion has to be more with staff, as I understand it.
And we did bring a presenter in, I think in January, that was really geared around self-care for staff. And we kind of spent a portion of that day, and that was, that was a suggestion that came from one of our meetings with the G C A Executive Leadership Group. So we are, we are working towards those things.
Sorry to hijack your presentation, if you could please take any advice.
Don't worry. So the last column on your navigating next document, dislearning environment consideration. The main thing away from this one is that remote learning will not be an option for two next year. And that has mainly to do with the big difference between remote learning and virtual learning funding. And so if you want that information, I'm going to let K J jump in. But they are encouraging the district to look at the potential for a virtual school for K twelve. Notice that K twelve, not pre-K twelve, the state is saying no to virtual, to K twelve programs. So what we have done, we started out with the parent survey that I mentioned earlier. To see if there is interest, there is, definitely parents with and have a virtual option. So we are now working with our group of teachers that are currently teaching remote. Kathy Mormon with her program and we're looking at what will it take to turn our remote learning into a virtual program. And then that will be another presentation someday.
Can I ask a quick question? And this may be for the presentation someday. When you're talking about the virtual learning, are they going to be considering the hybrid where they go part-time at all? Or is it going to be all or nothing?
I'm going to say that probably anything can be on the table in our discussions. I know the high school is really interested in a hybrid option or sometimes. Two-fold, one, we're seeing a lot of kids that are having success with some type of a remote option. I've had a parent actually call me and say, you know, my kid was always in trouble because he was one of those will-active kids, always talking, always about his feet and he's not in trouble this year. So there's that. There are kids that like it because they can move their own feet and do it without, again, without the distractions where everything is running on in their classroom. So some students really are sorry to be in that environment. So and the opposite side of that is if we have a number of kids that do want to do some kind of blended approach, then our cost sizes will be lower as the onsite facility. So potentially allowing us to better attend to these of those kids as well. So there could be a double benefit there. So I know that is one thing that we are wanting, particularly at the secondary level.
And just to be clear on words.
Yeah, I've got them all mixed up tonight.
So we're, although nothing's off the table in those conversations, we're probably more likely to see the blended where the student goes part of the day for maybe their core classes on, in a remote and then they go to school for maybe their music classes or for their C T E classes. Whereas the way we've been using the word hybrid is probably more of an every other day thing. And again, that could possibly happen, but I think it's less likely that that's, Glenda, is that accurate?
Yes, yes, sir.
Those are the words I need on my hand.
Yeah, if you don't use them every day, they all interchange, I get it.
But that's encouraging, I, thank you for sharing that.
Well, and now we have to watch between remote and virtual. We had that when we first started and I always wanted to say virtual and I was actually talking remote and now they're saying we can't have remote, so I can only talk virtual now. So we'll keep pushing back and forth and we can get there eventually.
Glenda, who's on first base?
Pete Hogan is on first base. Jay Lee's on second.
There's one thing I wanted to specifically point out. There's one thing I wanted to specifically point out is that it, because we do have these things being spent or deadlines of 2022 and 2023. Um, and I'm just going to say, you know, probably about thirty-three to forty percent of the money being spent, um, maybe statewide is probably appropriate versus having everything spent at this point or nearly everything spent um, with a supposed deadline of, say, June thirtieth by someone who may be, someone who thinks that everything should be spent by June thirtieth because they think the deadline is June thirtieth. With maybe KJ, with, does that sound about right? If somebody thinks the deadline's June thirtieth, means that?
I would say double things. Number one, we, we have until 2022 to spend it. And in a normal, like in this year, we were told about the money very early in the year. And we weren't able to spend it right away because we had to really take a look at what's the best way to spend these dollars. And the other thing about that is, um, if we go back to the audit report we received, um, I think at the last meeting, you know, one of the things that, um, you know, we got a note on was one of the things that they said, um, was really out of our control. We have to spend the money before I can request the money on a reimbursement basis. So to say that only, you know, thirty percent of the money has been drawn down, well, that's probably not too far out of line because it's maybe halfway through the year, but I have, still have to wait till I spend the money before I can ask for it. So I, I think that just given the fact that we weren't expected to spend it all in this first calendar year, um, and the fact that it's on a reimbursement basis, um, I'm, obviously that the percentages of that have currently been drawn down seem very reasonable to me.
Plus, we're also wanting to spend the money thoughtfully and strategically over the course of two, three years, right?
Absolutely. We don't want to spend it just to spend it. We want to spend it on the appropriate things that we need to spend on. And, and again, that takes time to figure out what are the needs of our kids and what are the best ways to meet those needs. And that doesn't happen overnight.
So certain senators from Lewisburg probably need to reread the federal bills, right?
Probably, and I'd be more than happy to help them with that.
Um, the other question that I've, I've got is just in reality, what, if you were going to be trying to hire new social workers and counselors, in reality, how, what kind of tools are you gonna be using in your toolbox? Because everybody's trying to do that. I mean, southwest Kansas, northwest Kansas, everybody that doesn't have trees and water and grass are trying to do that. So, I mean, I was in a four-hour meeting on the Judicial Justice Oversight Committee and everybody's talking about the lack of people, the lack of resources. What's gonna make us stand out to get that done?
So I think.
We are four-five-seven strong.
Yeah, but our human resources person before him was, was way better, I heard.
I think I've heard something about that too. I really aspire to be like that person one day. Um, I, I think that's a good question, Laura, and, you know, honestly, we don't have the positions. Uh, typically, we have a fairly high success rate in, in replacing counselors. So to have more positions available, um, that licensed social worker, um, they have masters in social work. You know, they can fill the counseling positions that we have, uh, at our schools. And I, uh, I would be pretty optimistic, um, that we could fill those, uh, in different means, uh, especially now. Just because, again, we, we would open positions up that we would not normally have. And so, uh, it would obviously depend on how many of those positions we were looking at. Uh, the timing would be a big aspect too, um, when we, when we were able to set that plan in place. Um, but, uh, I think we, I think we could fill some of those positions.
So it's great to have an optimistic leader of our H R office. Um, and, and I think, I think we're probably better positioned to do recruiting this year. Uh, we've got a little more manpower in there and I think they're diversifying their efforts even though there's some challenges doing that in a COVID world. But I think I would tell you, you know, the backup would be if we have dollars budgeted for positions like we've had to do with some other positions, we, we may have to look at trying to contract for some of those services in, in different ways. Um, we may have to work with groups like Compass, contract for time if we can't find people. Um, if they don't have them, then we may have to look at other, you know, outside resources, which would not be as good as having actual new people here. But having the dollars allocated would at least give us the possibility to explore some of those other options if we're not able to fund or find those positions, the, the people for those positions.
The only response I have to that is, um, obviously, social, emotional is so important. Um, and I think like we've really done a really good job of like upping our efforts with the committee that meets with that. And I know we passed some curriculum for that, but I feel like a lot of our efforts are responsive. And I feel like some of that needs to be more proactive, like curriculum-based in health or P E. You know, where we're, we're providing kids with techniques of how to do that or more information on mental health. So I, I hope we would, I mean, I'm not opposed to this idea at all, but I hope we would also start to look at really putting it into our everyday, like, curriculum, starting at a young age.
Can I jump in on that one? So with our newest curriculum, such as C A N, um, the D C framework, that does allow for the core curriculum to address social, emotional needs to blend it in throughout the day. Um, so that started just this year, um, the teachers were trained over the summer. And some of that training is still ongoing, particularly for the C C C framework. Um, but we do now have that embedded into our, our day, our daily routine.
And it's probably gonna take a little while because I think for some of our teachers, that's, that's happened this year and others because of all the other things going on. That's probably something we're gonna have to support them and, and, and.
Yeah, and I knew, I knew we had established a curriculum and I, that's awesome. I just hope we continue along those lines and it becomes, just as, as much of going to a doctor to, you know, annually to make sure your health, like mental health becomes that, that, like, just normalized.
Is that anything that's, um, implemented into our mentoring hours, especially at the secondary level? Or are they specifically, is that study hall homework type stuff?
Glenn, can you tackle that one?
I don't know if I was talking.
Yeah, it's built into the mentoring hour, the D C C framework lessons are built into that time, um, at the secondary level.
I should have known that, I think.
But we got you curriculum for every level, right, Glenna? Or was it just this step? Okay.
Yes, and in addition to the, the district level curriculum, so the second step is elementary, the D C C framework for secondary. We also added the, the Too Good For Drugs, um, that we have, that we partner with the police department on and we brought that in. That's also offered at the middle school, um, the elementary offer parts of that program. Um, but it is offered in its entirety in the middle school and the high school and also through the intermediate schools. Every other year is the intermediate, so one year they get Too Good For Drugs, then there's another one, so, um.
And our counselors, in addition to classroom teachers being trained, our counselors at the elementary level also go into the classrooms and provide lessons, uh, I think on a weekly basis. So there are steps in place.
Most of our schools have also adopted zones of regulation, um, and up our offering sensory rooms. And, um, that is one of the things that has come up, I believe in the committee. Um, Josh mentioned it to me that any school that doesn't have a sensory room, maybe we need to look at, um, extra dollars for, for that as well. A lot of them already have that, but, um, others are still lacking.
Anything else?
I, uh, have a question, I think, for Dr. Carlin and Lauren made point of order me because I'm not sure where to bring it up. I feel like this was our COVID report for the night and it was mostly on the financials of what we're going to do over the next school year. I'm curious, especially since we had a community member come in, um, where we're at on setting our levels each week and how are we, at what point are we gonna get back to level one or two this year? Because I feel like according to our plan that we set in place and the, the gating criteria presented to us, that it's not being followed at this point.
Okay.
And in my opinion, getting back to normal for kids, that it's safe and that that's one of the best things for their social, emotional state.
So is it okay to tackle that now?
Okay.
Um, the, uh, the CDC has released some guidance here in the last few weeks. And then the state released their navigating next, which we've shared a little bit of that, um, with you guys. We're in the process of reconvening our, kind of our groups that did our COVID plan. Um, and we're looking at maybe recommending some changes to the operational levels um, based on the feedback from the CDC guidance, based on the feedback we're getting from K S D, the navigating next, and that's coming from K D H E and their medical experts and, and with our local health department. They are all still really recommending that we continue the mitigation procedures that we've been using throughout the year. Um, but there may be ways that we can relax some of that. And so that's what we're gonna be processing. As a matter of fact, I visited with Laura about maybe at, uh, hopefully by our next meeting, which is supposed to be one of those short ones at five o'clock in the, in the evening, that maybe we could, uh, report back on any recommended changes because I don't think our next one is till the middle of April. Um, so we are looking at those kind of things. I would mind and I'll, I'll certainly visit with, um, Mr. Weezy. But the, the gating criteria that we established, we've made it clear since the very beginning, that that, that doesn't spit out an answer, an automatic answer. But that's a guideline that we use when we meet with the health department, um, every week. And, um, uh, and, and so although we, our numbers have been fantastic and we're certainly happy, uh, happy as can be about that, um, the recommendation that we've, we've been receiving still from the health department has been not to relax our, um, our mitigation steps um, for fear that if the numbers start to climb, we could, we could be back in, in a situation where we're having to look at hybrid or remote. And, uh, and the biggest priority for me right now, um, has been to, uh, to do everything I can. That's been my priority all year long, to try to have as many face-to-face days at school as possible. And, um, uh, and we, yes, we wanna do those as normally as possible. We think there probably are some things that as we, if the numbers continue to improve, that we could do a little bit differently, um, going forward, um, that, that would make things a little more normal. Um, but we also wanna follow the guidance that comes from the experts. So, so I hope that answers your question.
It probably does. I just, I have concerns that we keep moving the goalposts and changing the rules and that when it, at one time we're told, well, this is a criteria, so this is how we should follow it. And then the next time you hear that it's just a guidance and there's lots of information out there showing both sides of it.
Sure.
There's, there are states that have completely been completely closed up and their numbers are comparable to the ones that have been opened up. So I, I just don't see the data that says one thing, the mask or the, the social distancing is keeping the numbers down. We don't know. It, it could, could have been the same. And I really think the Garden City's reached the point where it's gone through, it's gone through here. So I, I just think we need to open our eyes a little bit and look at all of the data and not just the data coming from one place.
Sure, and Jennifer, I apologize for any confusion, but I, I don't think you've heard me say that with, in terms of that gating criteria, that we're gonna follow that exactly because that's.
I know, but then I'm not sure, I'm not sure why we have it, if, if that's, it's just gonna keep, the rules are gonna keep changing, so. I just, I thought it should be brought up because I have community members concerned about it. So I think it's fair enough to use.
No, absolutely. I appreciate the question, but I just, I hope I haven't misled you in any way on that.
Mark and Dana.
Okay, um, I really appreciate the question and the response. Particularly in light of the community comment, uh, I, you know, there's a lot in there to think about. And the process that I understand the U S B four-five-seven has followed is, to me, has been highly successful, if I can put it in those terms, but certainly involving a lot of the process of collaboration amongst the staffers, feedback from the schools. Um, and I'm, and so I'm asking, based on your comments, Dr. Carlin, that they're part of this process of, of developing something to bring back at that next meeting is, is communicating in those, uh, schools, uh, and getting some feedback on, on, on their perspective, I guess.
And absolutely, and we're, that's why it's gonna take a little time because it will work through those committees that we used last summer and it will ultimately go to our select vision group for a, an up or down recommendation. But nonetheless, it will then come to you, um, for final approval.
It's part of what, I know you're, you've gotta consider, there's so many facets there. But for example, even the wonderful effort that was reported on earlier, uh, making available inoculation for the virus to teachers and staff. It was, it was not every teacher and staff when they're taking, electing to, to take that, that series of shots. And so, in fact, percentage-wise, I get the impression that it's less than fifty percent.
I think that would be accurate, a little below fifty.
And, and so there's, you know, we hear talk about herd immunity concepts and, and I know personally, I think, well, if there's a vaccination out there, that will greatly change the game, uh, in terms of what we can do in ensuring a safe environment for our staff and our students. And I, I still think that's true, but not everybody's getting, uh, electing to take the, the, the shots. And, and it's not a criticism at all, it's just a part of the facts. And, uh, and so that has to factor in too, in, in that safe environment. And then where do you, like we've talked about since the beginning, I think, where do you err on in the side of, of, of safety and, and being careful? And so I, I, again, I applaud the process. I, I understand the need to be nimble in, in responding to the new information that comes along as well as the feedback from staff and, and other places. But I certainly look forward to the day when I'm not talking through a mask and as I think we owe it. So, um, I, I, I appreciate the effort. As always, there's an anxiousness to, to move forward with a, a better environment. And so I, I just have to trust that those communications are gonna work as well as they have in the past. That's a problem.
I just have a concern that.
I'm not sure. Dana was, yeah, I think that, I'll, I'll get back to you.
I just wanted to, to re, because what I'm hearing, Dana, was that we changed the way we're making that decision. So we never use the K S D E dating, that kind of, we had our four, was it four points of what helped us decide what level we were getting on? Was it four or five?
Uh, I think there's more than four.
We haven't said it for a while, but it's not in the forefront of my brain.
Five or six.
So my question then, just to follow along with Jennifer, maybe you weren't asking this, I don't know. I'm just saying, I feel like she's saying how we're making that decision has changed. And I guess my question would be, is that the case? Have we changed how we're making that decision? Because when you just gave us information, you were saying, well, the CDC is saying this. And so I wanna make sure we're still using that same method. Or if we, if we've changed that method, have we done the right process of changing that method? Do you know what I'm saying? Are the same people still meeting? Are you still meeting at the same time? And are you still looking at the five or six points, whatever it was, to make your decision?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We still have the. We still have the meeting with the health department and with 363 and the Catholic schools. We still utilize the data in what we defined in the gating criteria. And we also look at other data, like our employee absences, our substitute fill rates. And all of those are showing very good information right now. We've had really an amazing, probably last four weeks, three to four weeks. But we also have been listening to the recommendations from the health department and what's coming out from the CDC and KSD saying, even though those numbers look good, you need to keep your mitigation steps in place. And that's why we want to go back and look at the plan and see if maybe we need to realign some of those a little bit. And because I agree with Jennifer, this has been a moving target. But we know a heck of a lot more now than we knew about this in June. And we still don't have all the answers, but we do know more. And we do have a body of data and some experience in having dealt with it. So, on one hand, yes, we know it is going to change, because we know more. But Dana, we're following the same process and having the same people at the table when we make those decisions.
Jennifer?
I just still feel like the rules are changing, and we're not looking at situations in our district now where social distancing and masks aren't there, like sports and our fitness centers in the community and PE and recesses. I just, we're not even looking at that. I think that's some data we need to look at too. Those aren't causing hotspots in our district where it's, where we're getting higher numbers in COVID and we have more treatments for it. And I, putting it back in committee when we already have a plan in place to change it, I just, I feel like it's going backwards. We're not living up to our word. Because there, in the beginning of this, we also were told that under 12 weren't going to spread it, so they weren't going to be in masks. And then suddenly that changed, and we didn't even try that. So we don't know if that was an option either. I just, I don't know why we have these plans if we're just going to keep changing them or putting it back in committee so we're going to be set at level three and a half or four till the end of the year. That's what's going to come up, I think. It's, let's just keep it that way till the end of the year. And I don't think that's fair to the teachers or the students or the parents that have suffered from that side of it. So, I don't know. But I appreciate your explanation of why and how we're doing that.
And thanks for the question, it's a really good question.
But you're looking at lessening some of the restrictions? That's why you're taking it back to the committee and you're looking at that?
Hopefully.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking at, are we set up the best way we can be here, given the current recommendations that are out there?
So that takes us to, sorry, lost my paper one. Housing, are there someone from, is someone from the city having, has been in-
They're on Zoom, okay.
Hi. So are you ready?
We are. Sorry to keep you waiting so long.
Okay, thank you. First of all, let me introduce myself. My name is Carol Davidson. I am with the city. I am the director of the neighborhood and development services department. Melissa, who is my senior planner here with the city, she is there as well. She's going to actually make the housing presentation. I am going to actually be doing what Matt usually does. He was unable to make it tonight and gives his apologies. But what we're doing is we are committed to update or renew our RHID, Real Housing Incentive District program for the 2021 year. And as we do, in, as we have done in the past, we'd like to just give the school district and all the other taxing jurisdictions an update on where we're at and kind of where we're going. So I appreciate, like I said, I appreciate your time. I also appreciate, and pretty appreciate your willingness to be a part of this program that does bring in housing into Garden City, into the county area. This year, this last year, we actually had a really good year. We had a lot of housing put in last year. We still have, ever are short of our goals. And we, this is our, the best program that we have had to date to increase housing in this area. So all that, we'll have to talk about all the details in that. But I guess I will turn the time over to her right now, give her presentation. And then if you have any questions, you certainly can ask along the way or again.
All right. The Real Housing Incentive District program, this is a program that we offer to developers who are building housing in areas that don't have infrastructure, such as sewer, water, street, that they pay privately to install these systems. Then through a tax rebate program, they are able to recoup the cost of personal investment or private investments into our infrastructure. We do this on an annual renewal. And the way that we determine whether or not we are able to participate in this program is through a housing needs study that's in our community housing assessment team report, which we call the CHAT. We come to you whenever we do an update. The last update we did on that was in 2019. And through that update, it stated that Garden City qualified due to the need of housing within our community, that over the next 10 years, we'll need a total 1,200 homes or housing just added to our area to meet the demand for housing. A part of that CHAT study as well is they break down the housing categories or price points that they predict that we need within our city as well. What that translates into then, over the next 10 years, is on average, we need to add about 120 units of housing per year. And our housing, as Carol stated, we have had nearly 75 homes were built in Garden City last year. The 81% of those homes were built in our RHID areas. And while on average per year, we need to add 20, we need to add 22 overoccupied units. And those should be over 200,000. Here in Garden City, that's not a problem. When we come to talk, when we come to talk about how much it costs to build homes in our area, in the 2020 year, the average valuation of new single-family home construction was $212,000. In 2018, that average valuation of a price home was $187,000. So every year with the cost of material, the ability of labor and land, the cost of those homes here is higher price points in some areas throughout the state. The chart I'm going to show you now is 10 years, the number of housing units that we've completed here in Garden City. The program, RHID program began in 2012 and really kicked off in 2013. And that's where we had one of our greatest buys of housing. As you can see, in 2015, again, we had another high number of units completed. And that's due in part to the reserves at Prairie Ridge and Pioneer Trail, the duplexes and rental units that we added up next time. Since 2016, of course, you can see a trend of how few units being completed going up. And that is in due part to the availability of the RHID program and the ability for developers to build infrastructure and have available lots for our developers to build actual homes. So the chart that I just showed you was the percentage of occupancy that we issued per year. Every year, building permits are pulled. This is a 20-year, a chart that goes over 20 years of building permits here in Garden City. From 2000 to 2060, you can see we started off issuing around 50 to 60 permits. Then once you hit 2007, we saw a trend where we weren't issuing as many housing permits. And that lasted basically until we were able to provide the RHID program. And then since you see in 2012, 2013, we're now on an upswing in having the ability to offer land to be built into homes. So we see that uptick in permits being pulled to build housing. A majority of our housing is built as single-family homes, but we do have some multi-family, especially in the last couple of years, that have focused on duplex rental units or single-family attached houses as well. The Real Housing Incentive District, we have approved 21 developments since 2012. We do have seven of those developments that have completely built the predicted housing units that they added stock to our housing inventory. And then over the next couple of years, we anticipate six more of our housing developments, finishing the predicted housing they intend to build. This is a visualization of where our RHIDs are located throughout the city. In gold, those are the areas in which all the predicted housing has been built. And then in blue, those are areas in which we have adopted development plans for intended housing. Those have been approved not only by the state, but by the governing bodies. Then in the teal color, those are areas that, it's a three-step process for us essentially to approve an area plan to be, to utilize the RHID program. And so the areas in the teal red are areas that the state has approved. And we are just waiting for developers to submit development and group plans to build housing within those areas. The areas in the teal color, we added six new areas in 2019 and are still waiting for those to get developed into housing as well. So one way that we anticipate housing development is through the RHID program. Because they have to provide how many houses they intend to build over a time period, we work with developers that use RHID program, give us a pretty good outlook on the number of units they intend to develop. We anticipate five new developments looking to seek for approval of the use of the RHID program. We added those in the value third edition because it's one of the few developments. They will not be applying for RHID at this time, but it's nice to know we've got that development coming online this year that we can add that to how we're going to meet our housing demand needs. Because of course, while the average is 120 per year, we still aren't meeting that demand each year. So it almost snowballs us in the fact that if we aren't meeting the demand last year, then from that year to the next year, then we're almost playing catch-up each year with that. So the anticipated housing developments, we anticipate that 196 units of housing will become available. I'll now go through those various developments and show you a little more in detail where those will be and what they'll be doing. Sunset Terrace, the state, this is located at the Highway 10th and South Town Road south of Sunset Memorial Gardens. They'll actually be developing this housing development in two phases. And the first phase is going to be Sunset Terrace, the state's Phase 1. And they are going to be looking to build 55 units. This will be all single-family detached housing. In their second phase of development, there'll be 54 units of single-family detached housing. And again, they'll be extending all the infrastructure, including sewer, water, and electric out to this area, which will open up that eastern portion for future development as well. The next development that we anticipate coming for approval is the North Borough Second Edition Phases 1 and 2. This development is located north of the cemetery on Third Street. North Borough, we've had a first edition, where those duplexes you see up on North Third Street. That RHID development was approved in 2018. And just last year, they finished building all the units of duplex housing there for that one. North Borough Second Edition, we anticipate through Phases 1 and 2 to add 55 units of housing. This will be a mix of duplexes and single-family detached homes. Chapel Heights Fourth Edition, this is one of our more popular destinations in town for housing. They do a lot of build-outs quite quickly with a lot of their developments. They will be now building into a fourth edition of this residential development. And that's located over Mary Street and Jenny Barker Road on the east side of town. Chapel Heights Fourth Edition will include 49 additional lots for single-family detached homes. All of Chapel Heights residential development has been single-family detached homes. Looking to the future, they will do a total of, have the potential to build an additional 187 single-family homes once they build out the rest of that development. One of the newest developments that we have heard of is the Lost River Edition. This piece of land is actually annexed into the city nearly 26 years ago and has remained vacant. We've seen a lot of developments surrounding it to the north and the east, along with the single-family homes to the south. And this is located on North Campus Drive, just south of Prairie 28th and 11th. This will actually, development in total will have nearly five phases of development. And the first phase of development is going to be single-family lots. It'll be just north of Pioneer Road. And it'll connect Lost River Drive and Fleming Street to the north. And this will include 37 single-family lots. And that's the area highlighted there, that will be the first area of development. Future phases of this development anticipate to have single-family housing, multi-family housing, and a commercial component on the northeast side of the building, off of Campus Street. Well, the last development, we want to make you aware of, tonight is the Hawkeye Development. This is a really great use of the RHID tool. This is one of, while we love to extend infrastructure to area that doesn't have infrastructure currently down the outskirts of our city limits, this is kind of an in-field development where North 9th Street between Emerson and Thompson was never built. And so as a redevelopment area, the developer can apply for RHID funds to go ahead and put that street in. And then they'll also be doing some sewer and water permits as well. And again, that's located near Emerson Avenue and 9th Street. He will, the developer will be going in and reconfiguring those lots to open up 11 lots for single-family detached homes. I'll go over a little bit of, kind of a quick snapshot of what this housing future development will look like in our anticipated unit. So when we look at the five developments that we anticipate to be approved here in the next year, Sunset Terrace overall will be adding 196, and those will all be single-family. North Borough Second Edition will be 164 units. And that will be a mix of single-family duplexes. Hawkeye Development will add 11 lots for residential development, and that will be single-family. Chapel Heights, future phases will add another 236 total units of housing, again, all single-family. And then the Lost River Edition will add nearly 400-plus units of housing, including single-family duplexes and all single-family. So over the next- So over the next 10 years, that totals up to approximately 965 units. So we anticipate 96 units per year over the next 10 years being added to our housing stock to help us meet that need for housing, a goal of 120 homes per year. While we anticipate adding those new RHID areas, we still have many RHIDs throughout the communities that are still developing or building out. And so we pulled some of the more recent and larger developments. Prairie View Acres is just going to be north of Lot River, or yeah, Lot River Edition off of Prairie View Driving Campus. That total development anticipates to have 250 total units of housing, including single-family duplexes or single-family detached homes. And on the west side of that development will have multi-family apartments. Milestone Edition, like Hawkeye, was one of the great little in-field developments. It's on North Third Street and Stone Street, on the east side of Third Street. That development is going to be building eight single-family homes. And he anticipates those in the $220,000 price range upwards of $290,000. Some of our crossing that off of First Street, east of the bypass, they will be adding 52 units of single-family housing. And then Columbus Edition on the west side off of Joe McGraw Street and Taylor is one of the developments we do have that addresses some of our recourse housing needs. And those will all be duplex rentals and some homeowner duplex ownership in there as well. Hamptons 1 and 2, Hampton's Edition is north of Tractor Farm Supply behind Russell Child Development. They are looking to add 283 single-family units and duplex units. So when we think about how much housing we anticipate to have from the potential of upcoming RHIDs that we approved in this year, along with the existing already approved RHIDs, we're looking at nearly 1,792 units of housing being added to our community. And that efforts us out to about 179 units per year in the next 10 years. So we're really excited to get these new developments and the existing developments continuing to build out because we will now reach that plateau where our need for housing will be met with the RHID The numbers at the top just kind of give you totals of what we anticipate for the units to be added to our community. One of the important aspects that chat does talk about is owner, the relationship between owners, owner-occupied, the own, personal, own, and then rental housing. And their ideal mix that they put within the chat report is a 50/50. Right now, we anticipate that we will have a mix of 64% of the owner units and 35.1% of those be rental units. And that wraps up my presentation for this evening. Again, if you have any questions, here are our contact information.
Any questions? Mark?
Just a quick question. Now, is there additional information on properties out in the county that you didn't present here tonight? Or is this all the known developments, you know, within a stone's throw of Garden City as well?
So we don't have any known developments out in the county at this time that have come through our office. Right now, these are the only developments that have come through our office that we've worked with developers that are into the limits and are going to be applying to use the Rural Housing Initiative District program.
Okay, that clarifies it. Thank you. So there very easily could be additional developments out in the county that sort of help us with the housing and sort of add to this good news, if you will? Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, ladies. We appreciate your time and the information. Very exciting news and some promising information. I think this is probably the most promising housing update I've ever heard. So thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for your support.
Board, open discussion. Mark, would you like to start us off?
I would, but I don't have anything more other than what we've discussed. I really appreciate the earlier conversation on the continuing to look at the gating criteria and where we're headed with COVID mitigation strategies. And so I appreciate that.
Daniel?
I just wanted to say I appreciate the presentation this evening. We got a lot of great information. And I look forward to seeing what happens with some of those, some of those things and how we can keep improving on those.
Dana?
One of the things that was brought up tonight was some of the transition projects that are going on. And one of those things was videos for each of our schools on kindergarten readiness. It's the day in the life of the kindergarten. And that project actually started with a collaboration with Head Start. And the district was willing to do that at at least one of our schools for the Head Start kids, Head Start kids. And so it just goes to show how much the district does for the community and how important collaborations are. Because I think not only did it, you know, help the Head Start program, but it also kind of moved that forward for the district as well. So I just appreciate those collaborations. I hope we keep doing that and building on those. And so I just wanted to highlight the, that little thing that I got to be a part of. So thanks.
Alex?
A couple of quick things. Actually, just one thing. At the February 1st meeting, the board had three students address you with some concerns about the music tour, the middle school music tour. And I just wanted to report back to you and let you know that I did follow up and look into that situation. The, I know the students and their parents were concerned that we were, we were having sports activities, but we weren't allowed that, allowing that activity to take place. In looking into that a little bit, there was a couple of differences. One is the music programs are at this point able to have concerts. And those probably parallel the, the sports activities. They have the same spectator limits, social distancing requirements, those kind of things that we do at the, at the sporting activities. I think where the principals felt like they needed to not approve those activities was due to the fact that this would have basically created an assembly at the schools where the performances were happening. And we haven't been doing assemblies because of those same things. So those would have been the first assemblies of the year. And also field trips, and we haven't been doing field trips. And again, I know that it's unfortunate that we're being to take those precautions, but I think the decisions they made were consistent with what we've been doing in other places. I did try to schedule appointments with all three. One of the parents and students came to visit with me, and we had a great conversation. The other two chose not to meet with me. But I wanted you to know that I did make an attempt to follow up and hear their concerns firsthand and kind of let them know what I had discovered when I looked into that. And I hope our community understands that we really do value all, all that we do for kids. Our academics are important, and our activities are important. And that includes all activities. And I know KJ got some information for me about the investment that we make in, in our music programs and our sports. And the dollars the districts invest are very similar, if not maybe a little more to some of the specific music programs. And I, I shared with the family that came to see me. I was a musician when I was in school. I know that might be hard to believe, but I played the trumpet and I sang in the choir. And those were invaluable experiences in my growth and development. And I certainly think those things are every bit as important as everything else that we do. Some kids are, are sports kids and some kids are music kids. I was lucky enough to be in a, in a school where you could actually do both. And I think we still have some kids that do both here as well. So, but I just wanted to let you know I did follow up and I have communicated with all the kids and the parents that were involved.
Dr. Carlin, you and I spoke about this before those three girls came to this board meeting. And one of the things that you had answered with one of my questions was about traveling teachers as well. And that teachers are limited to how many schools that they can travel to. Can you maybe give some, do you remember that part of our presentation?
Yeah. So one of the, one of the mitigation steps that we've taken at, at level four in our plan, we only allow, unless it's an emergency situation, we only have staff members. And that includes my team when we go visit schools, visit, travel to their homeschool plus two other schools in a day. And at level three, we do their homeschool plus three other schools in a day. So, so we do have some limits regarding the number of schools that we, we have people visit at. But again, if, you know, the, one of the first things we're trying to do here is to minimize the cross contacts and the exposure to different people. And so having a group of six-year-old kids, visit five different schools and interact with hundreds of kids potentially in each of those schools was just something that was a risk that seemed unwise to take. I will say too, that the principal had met with the music teachers and had developed an alternative way to do the activity. Wasn't as ideal as being able to go there and, and do the normal performance. But they performed through Zoom and reached out to classrooms. They did that to classrooms individually, and they were able to conduct those events. Again, it may be possible when, when we get a little further down the road here, that this kind of event could be scheduled before the year's over as well. You know, an outdoor activity is something that would probably cover a lot of the concerns. But at the time, the weather probably wasn't conducive to an outdoor, an outdoor activity, especially what we got, like we got to the middle of February. But, but if, if that's something that those groups want to look at doing in April or May, I think all the principals, and I did visit with the four, both principals at the intermediate schools and both principals at the middle schools. And I think they would all be, you know, open to looking at, at other ways that this could be accomplished. They just couldn't do it in the timeframe that was the most desired.
Mark?
Just to follow up on his comments, Dr. Carlin, you know, I heard a little bit of discussion, maybe even tearing over some activities, some of those co-curriculars into the summer. And I presume that our, our levels of activity would be projected into summer activities as well? I mean, you're going to continue that evaluation into the summer. Is that correct?
Yeah, our, you know, I think our plan, when we shared that with you, the concept was it was for this year. So that would probably take us through June 30th was, was the premise that we were kind of following. And again, hopefully, we know more by then, and maybe we are at a point where we can relax restrictions. But we're, we're learning as we go a little bit here.
It was just a question on, it was even at grade school level, I think, maybe just sort of speculation or a conversation, thinking outside the box. If, if the kids couldn't have performed as, I mean, to all of their parents during regular school, you were, it was just a question that came up. And so I didn't have an answer. So I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. For bringing that back after the meeting, so it happened. The next meeting of the Board of Education will take place on Thursday, March 25th at 5:00 PM in the Board Meeting Room at the Educational Support Center. We do need to go into executive session for matters relating to employer employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with a representative or representatives of the body or agency. I believe Dr. Carlin was suggesting himself, KJ, and he being involved with that executive session for probably 45 minutes. Starting at 9:00, 7:00? Or do we need some more time? Do we have some to break?
Yeah, these rush orders.
So 9:10?
9:10, 9:50.
I don't want to wait until 9:50? Or did you say 9:30?
No, 9:10, 2:00, 9:50. The time.
Okay.
Maybe you need a break.
Maybe I need a break. Starting at 9:10, okay? Is there a second? Or is that a motion? Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
We were repeating some?
I wish, but sorry.
I'll withdraw that.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed?
Either 40 or 45.
45.
45.
We're going to be meeting in here somewhere. I think you guys have.